This is the work session reconvening. Is that the right word, I guess? Reconvening our work session for November 1st of 2021. Our first part of the work session was a tour of the South Water Treatment Plant. And now our next part will be discussion of our park dedication and Tree Environmental Enhancement Fund budget discussion. Number four will be the recycling fund budget discussion. And five will be the maintenance of driveway east of Highland Road. And then number six is the redemption house issue. With that, I'll just do a quick introductions here. We have with us this evening, for the work session, we have Sergeant Patrick Cummings sitting in for Chief Falls this evening. We have David Abel, our Community Development Director, Brian Grimm, our Finance Director, Mike Barone, our Administrator. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the Mayor. And council members present are Pam Mortensen, John Chumperlin, Ann McGregor, Kathleen Refkin. And also, we have our City Clerk, Dawn Matzko, and Director of Administration, Pali... Ally, Paul Foose. [laughing] And then Greg Peters, uh, Peters with, Greg... Gary! Oh, my gosh!
You're doing so well.
I was doing so well. I was on a roll, and I goofed it all up. Gary Peters, Public Works Superintendent. So with that, us, Park Dedication and Tree Environmental Enhancement Fund, Brian.
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. And I'll try to, I know I promise this every time, but I know there's four items and there's 90 minutes, so I'll try to keep it to 20-ish minutes on my couple of items. So, and also, as far as the park one, I know David and Gary are here, and they can probably speak a lot more as far as the detail of the parks and what's recommended for capital improvement items for 2022 and that. So as far as, I guess, the, just highlighting the memo, the Parks Commission did, had a discussion on the CIP like they do every year at the September 14th meeting. I think they voted 3-0 to recommend the approval as presented, and we'll get into the, what was some recommended in a second here, but one of the items that they did state is that they, their recommendation was to not to exceed 300,000, so, but obviously, that's up to the council as far as what they want to do as far as projects in 2022 out of the park dedication funds. Some, maybe just skipping ahead to page five in the packet, I think the Parks Packet Plan, that's the memo that Nick Olson brought to that meeting, I think shows in pretty good detail as far as what are the main projects that, you know, staff and then the Park Commissioner are recommending for 2022. So you can see there, Friendship Park, replace the playground equipment, you know, some of the other improvements there of the site work, obviously, that goes along with it. Roughly estimated to be about 125,000, 150,000. And then G. Lanier Park, that's probably the main or probably the first priority, I guess, for from, I mean, I guess it's, yeah, up to the council ultimately, but I think that one's been talked about for a couple, few years now, as far as, you know, doing some improvements to G. Lanier Park. And you can see there again, it's the playground equipment, the tennis court. Getting things up to ADA compliance is, is one of the biggest things there, and I think one of the main cost drivers. And then lastly, is things like Douglas Park to replace the basketball court there. If you flip back up to page four, I guess that's probably, want to see how that ties into our current numbers and what we have in the park dedication fund. So you can see, as of right now, we're projected to have it at year-end once all the 2021 improvements are paid for, which from the main improvements there, where it was in Jennings Park this year, we have a projected cash balance in the fund of a little over a million dollars, a million 37,000. If we did all of the improvements listed on that sheet, if you go over to the Budget 22 column, we'd be, you know, getting up towards, you know, 480,000, 490,000 of improvements that ultimately would bring the balance from that little over a million down to about 600,000. I think that's maybe where some of the Parks Commission discussion came into play, is how much do you want to spend down, how much do you want to save for other parks? Obviously, the lion's share of this packet item is just the annual update, or the, basically the, all the different parks we have and the different amenities we have, and I mean, sort of the maintenance schedule, and I'm guessing the council had a chance to read through all of that information. So we'll have to stop at this point and turn it over to the Mayor and Council if they have any questions or comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Council?
Okay.
Do we know why they hung their head on the $300,000 number?
I can probably speak to that.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, you are.
I can, I can, I understand.
That's where you were, so like, yeah, I was on that.
So, I was gonna wait till they end up.
Yeah, no, I think the segue is good here.
So, there were three people present at that meeting, I'm not cutting you guys off. And what I observed was, they didn't really have the information or the tools to say, let's do this, 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 and this. What they talked about was what the total amount in the fund currently is, and knowing that there's not going to be as much building going on in the future, there was some concerns of, you know, how are we going to replace these funds, and how are we going to prioritize what needs to be done? So there was a lot of discussion about that. So I suggested that, like we've done with our roads and other projects, we put it all on a spreadsheet. The papers that we get are great, with the pictures and all that, but if we could put it onto a spreadsheet showing all the parks, what the costs are, and kind of in a priority list, would definitely help us, but then these park committee members would really get a good grip on what they're, you know, trying to get to us for their recommendations. They all agreed, they thought that was great. The other recommendation I made, and they all agreed on this, is I think they should maybe go and visit all the different parks with Gary. I know that's time, Gary, but I think it would be...
Or with Nick.
Or Nick, whoever. But just go to the parks and show them, you know, everything, because one of the gentlemen's said, I don't even know what these parks are.
Or where they are.
Where they are. So I told them I would bring it to council. So those are my recommendations. The $300,000 was just a number pulled out of the sky, because they didn't really have, you know, anything really to base another, so.
Good, glad you were there.
Yes, it was, and they really are, they're a great group, and I think we're underusing them.
Okay.
I think we talked about doing, you know, event-type things with them, but even just getting them more involved in this.
Right, right.
But getting them more involved, where they feel like their input is important. So that was my observation.
Probably a couple of comments I would have, say, what they're referencing and what you're bringing back, you know, from them is almost doing what we do similar to a lot of our other funds, you know, on Gary's schedules out there, you know, the water, seawater equipment, streets, and in Paul Falls, does the police equipment. Parks is probably a little bit more of a challenge, based on a couple of different things. I mean, one, there's, our park dedication is probably a drop in the bucket compared to all the different improvements when you look at Lyle Park, and, you know, obviously it's one of our main parks, and then even just all these other parks that are listed here. So that's probably been the biggest impediment to trying to schedule things out too much is as far as, it seems like there's a lot out there and how to, how to give one the nod over the other. And then, I think in the past, it seems like, for better or worse, I think we, the park commission's made some recommendations, and sometimes the council's had other ideas, which is obviously up to the council's discretion to do, so, I mean, if it's something that would help, I guess staff could work together and put together a recommended, like, five-year plan or something, but knowing that, yeah, to the point of the park dedication funds, you can see, like, on the, on the spreadsheet, we received almost 300,000 this year, but now that what they call fourth and fifth came in, I mean, I don't, I don't envision anything that large coming in anytime soon, correct, or?
It doesn't seem as such, you know, we'll have to, we'll see when fourth and fifth get going, how fast they go, you know, basically. But, you know, to Brian's point, I guess what I'll add to that, comparing these to other funds, I mean, a lot of this is the eyes and the beholder. Gene Lanier's been five years, we've been looking at doing something with Gene Lanier, and we've had different, whether it's council members or park commissioners, our park commissioners used to go out and look at parks, and our planning commission does a good job. John, who used to be on the planning commission, and many of them will go out and look at the sites, you know, those sorts of things. But, you know, two or three people will go look at Gene Lanier and say, it's just fine, and, you know, five people say, get it out of here, we gotta redo it. So it's, there's not a measurement like you have with pavement management and, you know, age of things, so it's like, to Brian's point, it's, you can't, it's hard to treat this like you do your other fund accounts in that regard, there's not the constant steam or revenue coming in, those sorts of things. We can rely on what, you know, Gary and his guys see every day, what the problems are. The, the big thing why, why Gene Lanier is, we've been fielding lots of complaints lately about Gene Lanier. That's been the biggest complaintant, I think, in the last year and a half, if not two years, people have been complaining about that park, that it's needs in repair and replacement, so.
Well, I think, I think a tour with the park commission would be very helpful. We have new commissioners, and I think that might get them, you know, kind of interested as well as kind of knowing where things are and what things look like. So I think that really would be good. The other thing is, I, you know, I'm getting, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, well, even though we have more parks and more needs down the road, we still should address the needs that we currently have. You know, I mean, they're not going to get, they're not going to get better, and they're not going to get cheaper, so if we have the funds, maybe we should do more rather than less. I mean, if they, if they had a real good rationale, only spend 322 because we know in '23 we're going to be spending X number of dollars on something, whatever, I could see that, but if they say, only spend 300 because we have a whole lot of other needs, well, then let's address those other needs, you know, currently. That's, that's the only thing I would say is, but I think, to your point, we, if we had a further out, you know, kind of a, because here, we only see '22 and '23, we don't even know what's coming in '24, or what other options or possibilities there are, so.
But if you read through the park attachment that lists them all, which I did, looking at was, and I assume this was updated to project, well, what might we do in '23, what might we do in '24? In '23, there's only a, and I know these changed, there's only a couple trail overlays and re-roof on a shelter. Doesn't sound like a lot of dollars, but yet they're not projected in the '23 report that we've got, which I, I would have liked to have known that, to see how much more that ending balance of 629 comes down, but I don't see that as being big dollars. But I can understand the concern about pulling a million dollars, all of a sudden you pull it down to 600,000, well, that still sounds like a good number, but if, if I looked through here and I saw some other major, like Gene Lanier Park, where I knew it was going to be, you know, 250 to 300,000, I'd be concerned too, but I don't see that unless there's something here that I'm missing. And so I'm comfortable with doing what staff recommended for next year, other than the only question I would have, and it's a piddly number, is Douglas, 25,000. I looked at that yesterday, and of course, I have an untrained eye, the court looked nice to me, but...
Well, here's the other thing. It was just redone in 2017, wasn't it? That's what was in the packet.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, the issue we're having out there is, when I gathered, there was some large cottonwoods that had been removed...
Right.
...10, 12 years ago now, and the root system under there is causing it, is causing, what's causing the cracking out there. We've patched up best we could, the court service itself is, it's, you know, it's deteriorating because of the blacktop underneath there, it's getting to the point that it's due for rebuilding, because it's, I don't remember, when was that, 1990?
But it was resurfaced in 2017.
Well, just repainted, that's all, that's...
Oh, okay.
Just that, when they say resurface on the court, it's just actual finish on top. There's nothing, I mean, the surface is kind of cracked a little bit, but it's the painting that's done on it.
Okay.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but Gary, that's the same issue that we see at the tennis court over at Gene Lanier.
Correct, because of all the old trees, we got a lot of cracking going on, we've had a number of complaints from both of them, and we did kind of try to patch the best we could, the biggest complaints are here for the pickleball users and stuff, so...
But, but the pictures that this guy took, or Gary took, and one quite upset neighbor this summer provided me with some information as well, he says people are twisting their ankles, I mean, there's literally, you know...
No, which one are you talking about?
We're talking about the Gene Lanier.
Gene Lanier, right.
Yeah, there's some good two-inch cracks out there, there's actually a little heating going on.
Speaking with Gary, he said that is shot, so...
Right, no, we, I knew that, and I wasn't questioning that, I just, yeah.
The other thing I want to point out, it may not be in here, Gary, I don't know if it's you or who else on your staff has the playground certification?
Both Nick Redkey and Trevor Barrett do have playground certification, and they're basically have a certificate, they're certified to go and check for the, according to what the playground standards are.
So, right now...
And we're not meeting it with Gene Lanier because it's outdated.
It's outdated.
Yeah, it doesn't meet the day's standards.
So whenever they go out there and they check for safety, whether it's Gene Lanier stuff that was installed in '94, or Friendship in '99, none of that's, equipment there is going to meet ADA requirements currently, so if there's something broke it, they have to remove it, because there's no way for them to get parts or repair it that meet a standard. So you can't just say, well, the slide's gone, let's get another slide. We can't get that slide, the, the slide there, or whatever, whatever piece of equipment probably doesn't need ADA requirements currently, so that accounts for a lot of the cost for all this stuff.
And we've already removed the swings at Gene Lanier because...
Yeah, right, because of that, we were, yeah.
The foundations, the footings are actually loose and broken on the swings there, starting to rot back in, of course, so we had to remove that just for pure safety factors, so...
Well, I, I don't have a problem doing the Gene Lanier Park, because it's been on the, on the list for so long. The only thing I would say is, can we kind of get a little creative regarding the ADA issue for Gene Lanier?
I want to talk about that.
And actually, we, I met with Robert Slippka out there from WSB, he's one of their play, other playground engineers, Candace...
Candace...
Hanson.
Hanson, he was there, but we, I work with Robert now, and he's the one actually who redesigned, came with a great layout for Jennings Cove. We have an issue, I don't know if you've ever been out there, but it's quite a steep approach going up there.
Right, yeah.
They were looking at doing some switchback stuff. Well, Robert took a different approach, he said, we own all the property all the way down to the north.
Right.
We can put a parking area down there for a handicap spot, and then bring it up on that, up the embankment with some flat transition areas for stopping with a rest point. There would be, we had to remove a couple of pine trees, but there'd be enough room up there to come up, have a transition rest point and continue on.
Yeah.
That would make ADA requirement, that would, A, eliminate not having to remove and redo the wall...
Yeah, right.
And making all these switchbacks, you know, the other trail, the other trail could stay, that might be resurfaced, but there'd be notification that, you know, handicap access with an arrow down that way. So we would be covered that way, and then, you know, redesign the park.
It'd be less expensive, because I know at one time, they were talking 150 to 200,000.
It was very expensive. This, this one's still, I'm not getting on a sugar corner, it's not going to be cheap to do it, but it's a lot cheaper than what we looked at doing, redoing the walls and doing the switchbacks and all that, so...
So Gary and David, you could chime in as well if you feel like you need to, this estimated cost here includes this kind of new approach to it?
Yes, it's, it's hard to do without, you know, having any, you know, we're just kind of throwing a number out there, what, you know, what we think it'll cost to do a court, and to redo the court and stuff, so, a lot of this stuff we're finding we can do in-house if we did at Gene Lanier. We would, or at Jennings Cove, we would take and actually remove all the surface from the tennis court ourselves and do all the prep work. We'd rebase it, same thing at Douglas Park, so, I mean, we would do a lot of that stuff in-house, which saves a lot of...
Oh, that would help. Yeah, it does.
You know, I mean, now, you know, with the roads getting in a better shape, then we're not going to be all patching for three, four months straight like we used to, or getting rid of those, we'll have more opportunity to, to go out and be proactive and get this other stuff done and save money in other areas, which is going to be great.
Okay.
Going, staying on Gene Lanier, fitness stations, are those staying? It's listed here, fitness stations, 1994.
Oh, what is it?
Fitness station?
I don't think that they're anymore.
They're in the woods, they're actually...
Oh, are they?
Those wood, those log things or whatever.
Yeah, some of them, but that's on the trail more for the, the trail actually through the park is, I expect, if I went in, the Homer Association takes care of the rest of it, I think some of them are in the Homer Association, so I think they originally went in with that, and, you know, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how that would work with us, you know, I don't think we would ever replace them, but...
It's just listed here.
Yeah, and it's, it's just kind of some chinup bars and, it's, it's, you know, it's not what you're, a whole gym setup, I mean, I think it's just a little area to do some chinups or whatever, or some sit-ups, bars, I think is what it is.
Okay.
Okay, I have bigger questions.
Yeah.
Where does this money come from, for this home?
It comes from when we have a development come in, and there's usually a dedication of either land or cash in lieu of land, so basically, that's where our revenue stream is, and it's specifically or statutorily dedicated that it has to be spent on park improvements, park dedication.
Okay, okay. When the land subdivides.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's not, it's not coming from the actual residence taxes?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, this is totally revenue stream, yep.
Yeah.
This is subsidized with property tax.
Back off the, how many parks we have, and, just 38, 200 people. Do we have any stats at all, ever, on who uses these parks, or how many people use them?
No, we don't, not, no statistical data, just observations and people calling with questions and stuff, so, from ours, from what we can tell, they're heavily used.
Gene Lanier, my first idea here, is hardly used, but it's had a lot of turnover, there's a lot of people now that are using it, and they're also coming from the hermitage area across the street, it's the closest park.
That's good.
And so we get a lot of, I mean, there's a lot more use exterior we've seen in the last five, six years with a lot of turnover in the development itself and all the new houses across the street, a lot more younger kids, so it is definitely getting used a lot more.
And then, who decides what either equipment, swings, tennis courts, who decides what goes into a park?
Well, what we do, like with G. Lanier, we kind of figure out the size of the play container itself, and then we'll send it out to three or four, two, three, four different companies, either Minnesota, Wisconsin Playgrounds, St. Croix Rec, Miracle Camp, you know, that type thing, we'll say, this is the size we have, what, and this is kind of with the dollar amount we're looking at, what can we fit in there, you know, to do that? You know, so basically, this is what we have now, and we want to keep, you know, the, you know, that tot area, you know, that, kind of that two to six area, then that more of that seven to 12 area, maybe in some swings, you know, what can you guys come up with, what can we fit in there, you know, for the dollar, and so we worked, it worked out great for us, and we're actually getting more play equipment now at, coming into Jennings Cove than we had before.
I think that's kind of what we did.
Yeah, we've got three plans.
Yep, and then you guys decide what, you know, what's kind of the best fit.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, going forward, if the builders aren't putting money into that fund going forward as we grow?
Well, development, so when they subdivide, then that's part of their development fees that they pay.
Okay.
So, well, for many years to come, we are going to have development, but as you look on the spreadsheet there, there's going to be some ebbs and flows, so this year, we took in nearly 300,000 in park dedication, next year, we're anticipating only maybe 50,000. So it depends.
Yeah.
Well, because, again, and I'm glad that you pointed out, you pointed out, John, because at 300,000 per park, we're going to run through it pretty quickly.
Right.
So if there aren't that many parks that are going to acquire 300,000, then I guess I'm okay with all of them.
And most of them won't, I mean, if you look at what Jennings Cove was, like, 80-some-thousand total, I think it was, for the playground equipment and stuff, and then was another one at Cameron Road.
I think a total was one.
They're wrong, probably, it depends on the size of them, but, you know, that had a lot of, you know, it had a side of the basketball court, where we redid and that type stuff, but, you know, that, probably that 100 to 125, 150,000.
You have the Lyle Park Shelter, which was 75,000.
And I can, I might put it kind of into a spreadsheet if you'd like, I mean, it's not going to be perfect, you know, but we can at least put it out there, kind of show you on a spreadsheet what's got to be done.
Most of it's in, as far as the trend we've done the last few years, is in here, the Lyle Park picnic shelter, Jennings Park, so you can see that. The 2022 would definitely be a more aggressive year than what we've done in the past as far as, you know, doing Gene Lanier and Friendship, if we, if we do all of them, or whatever, it's a little more investment than we've made in the past several years, but that's obviously up to the council. I mean, the money is, is there, it's just a matter of, like, once we're done with it, it'll probably be roughly around 600,000, and then we'd have decisions to make from there, I guess, so...
Okay. So, do you want to go with the 300,000, which would do Gene Lanier Park, or do you want to do staff's recommendation, or something in between?
I think we were, we saw three, we have the money, and we're getting complaints on them, so just fix them and get them done. Gene Lanier's not going to get cheaper.
No, that's, well, I don't think anything's going to get cheaper, so...
It's what new rules they'll put in next year.
Yeah, I think, you know, we should do all three and then see where we come in at. I mean, you could do Gene Lanier first and see where that really comes in at, and then you could, see, the only thing I was thinking is the Douglas Park basketball court, I wonder if you could do kind of in conjunction with the, the tennis court, if that is somewhat similar. You know what I'm saying? Then if somebody is coming into our community to redo the tennis court in Gene Lanier, maybe they would also do the basketball court in Douglas Park, I know they're not close, but...
Madam Mayor and Council, that would be the plan, we would take care of all the prep work at both.
Right.
We talked to a contractor, he kind of gets where that number comes from for, for the concrete out there. We just put a brand-new fence around there, we have all that new curbing in there, around when we did the upgrade to tuxedo, it just would make more sense instead of trying to take fence down, get a paver and a truck in there to do it in concrete, that's why it will be, you know, save that money, the re-struck and all that and taking it down and put it in there, but that was the plan, get that one redone, and then have the same contractor...
Do the tennis court.
Do the sort of resurfacing on both of them, so...
Okay.
Okay, and then I have a question for David. I went down Saturday to look at the park, and drove around, and on my map, on my Google map, it shows more than what you have outlined here, so is this very definitely just the park and across the street where the lift station is, that's not any part of it?
You're talking Gene Lanier?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On my, on my Google map, it actually shows it across the street as well, it shows that, it shows that the park goes across the street, and it's the lift station in the swamp and everything back there, no?
No, there's no park over there.
That's Wall Three, that's across the street, that's our, well, Wall Street area.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah. Okay, well, Google Maps didn't get it.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking, in, just in defense of what you saw, you probably saw it outlined because it was all city-owned property, that'd be my guess.
Oh, sure.
You know, it outlined, you know, it just glommed them together, so, they are different, so...
Okay. Okay. John, Pam, you okay with doing all three then, and, okay?
Yes.
Yes, and based again, and my, my take is, again, based on going through all the parks, looking at what, and I go, I know it's just projections, but what might need to be done at them in the future, I don't see a problem if these numbers are relative of drawing of spending 400 and, or 490,000 next year.
Yeah.
I think at a minimum, obviously, Gene has to be done.
Yeah.
But I don't have a problem with the other two either.
Okay, all right.
The only thing I will mention, the only outlier would be Lyle, finishing Lyle Park, that's the big ticket item.
That's the big ticket.
Just, just for clarification, you're correct, there's, the existing parks, there's not really any big, huge expenses, but the big deal is, you know, there's a lot of money left to be put into Lyle Park, so...
Sure, but we did just put a shelter in, so for the time being, we've shown that we're putting resources there.
Right, right, no, I agree.
Yep, and I think that was done in lieu of doing Gene Lanier Park...
Yeah.
...this past year, so, I mean, I know the price tag was different, I think with the influx of money this year, I think you're probably better able to handle Gene Lanier now, going on '22, so...
Yeah.
But it was good that we did put some money into that, but as David mentioned, there's But it was good that we did put some money into that, but as David mentioned, there's still a lot to be discussed and done out there, so.
So just one other real quick question. Um, a, a park tour, can we organize something like that? I mean, would that be good? I mean, and if the council, and I know we have new council members that might want to participate, so maybe we could do it as a work session. We might have to wait.
Middle of January?
We might, we might have to wait. I was going to say, you might have to wait until.
We can all break a rape, so we can rape the park as we go.
There you go.
Make a cleanup section.
Snow on the ground between now and December 6th, it'll be cold out, and we'll do it.
So, well, do you want to do it? You want to do it in November?
Nope.
See, I don't think so. See, I'm just thinking we have, we have the water tower, ribbon cutting, then we have an, we have some earlier, yeah, we have kind of some long work sessions. Yeah. I wouldn't mind, but you know, we have, Kathleen's a little freeze bunny, so.
Hey, she's from Hibby, so come on.
But maybe.
Something in the spring.
We could do something in the spring.
Springtime's probably your better bet.
And if you want to go look at them and email a question or whatever, just, you know, copy David or I, we can probably answer most of your questions that you'd have wanted, so. Go look at them yourselves or whatever and kind of tour them and take a look where they're at and what's going on.
Right.
So I think the one takeaway I've got from this going forward is you're good with what you got on the item in the packet, but the spreadsheet you would like to see for future park spending?
Yeah.
And so I think this is something these guys could possibly work on over the winter and have it ready for your tour.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
I think that would be able to, as David mentioned, you're not always going to know what kind of income you're going to have in any given year, but at least you'll know the game plan and potential game plan for future years, so I think they could do it, so.
Okay.
Sorry to stick you with something else to do over the winter, David, but that's what I heard from these guys.
Um, David, could you communicate that to the Parks Committee as well as follow up to the September 14th? That we are looking at doing a tour of the parks in the spring?
Sure.
And then composing a spreadsheet for them to use in the future also. Thanks.
Okay. Tree replacement fund?
Yes, and that's just on page 24. Um, I guess staff doesn't envision any major changes to it. And we can still see there's roughly about $400,000 that's been there, so.
So here's my, I'm going to interrupt you only because we're beyond our 20 minutes.
Yeah, I know, that's my bad.
No, no, it's, it's ours and that's fine. I have an issue having that much money and not doing anything with it and I know we keep holding on to it to say, well, because Emerald Ashbore is coming. But, um, what I wanted to point out is that, um, there are, so the House Environment and Natural Resource Committee met Wednesday morning to receive updates from the DNR and several topics, including the Emerald Ashbore were discussed. And last year, um, they have monies, grant dollars available. And so I'm thinking, okay, fine, um, we, we want to make sure that we start looking at these grants because we should be doing something with this money. And, and if we can subsidize it with grant dollars, we could do more. And so I think we should be looking at that and we should be thinking about how we're going to be spending this money because just sitting here, I don't think it's doing anything. So for your information, what this money is from, again, when a developer comes in and develops a certain property and they, we have a tree preservation ordinance, if they remove more trees than they're allowed to remove, then, and they can't replant or don't want to replant or whatever, then they have to pay into this fund. So again, these are not tax dollars or, these are not dollars that are levy tax dollars. So I think we should be using these whether it's to plant trees in boulevards or on right-of-way parks.
Are these the remove replace grants that they've put out, which would mean we'd be cutting down and removing the existing ash tree replanting or is it supplemental planting, you know?
No, it's, what she's talking about is the removal of the ash trees from the DNR. They've got a million some dollars.
There's, I'll send you this link.
I've, I've seen it.
It's both, it's both removal and replanting and, um, uh, I'm sorry, Emerald Ashbore update, uh, house, blah, blah, blah. Um, I'll send you this and you can take a look. It's preventative, tearing down, replanting, that kind of thing. So, um, and then they also give you a list of all of the communities that received grants. And I think it's the 22, 23, I think, awards that were already given. I'm not sure. But anyhow, we should just look into that because, um, if, if the grant requires like.
Half.
The half. See, we have this money here, so we should be applying for it.
So we're, so we're going to start actively cutting down trees then? That's, this is a big policy discussion, right, that lady, that the council needs to grapple with. I mean, if we're going to start actively doing that.
Well, the other thing I think it is, is also treating ash trees. I think it can be used for that.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's a number of things that, so maybe we can talk about that next, this coming year and find out, get more information.
We're going to remove a few in Gene, uh, Jennings Cove and.
People who don't like.
People went nuts. Just to let you know, I mean, they were, you know.
Well, I told you. I told you that.
But you guys need to have because that's what's, you know, you'll start hearing it, so.
But I think in Jennings Cove, we already talked about that and said we should replant.
And we have been. We, there we have planted several trees over the last, you know, five years that we've been, we've been working through all the parks that we've had already. So we're kind of planning ahead.
Yeah.
We've done Jennings Cove, we've done Lyle and Linden and Merzmarsh, we've added a bunch of trees around already just to kind of keep that. North Lyle, we've added some too, so just to stay ahead of the game.
And then sometimes when you take out big trees and then plant them with these little spindly things, um, they're not going to be very happy. So we might want to think about, um, using some of the tree fund money to plant a little more substantial trees. I know you plant, the bigger trees you plant, the slower they grow initially. It, so, but at least you get a more significant tree, so we might want to just look at that too.
The DNR article I thought I read was because the drought had taken out so many new plantings.
This, this wasn't that. Okay, this was Metro City's news.
Yours was something different.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
So.
Do we have any issues with what you're just saying right now? Did we plant any little trees that we lost in the drought?
No, we, we don't plant little seedlings anymore anyway. We do plant, if anything gets planted.
They're two, three inch caliber tree.
At least, yeah, at least. Um, so we haven't done those little things for, since back at the days when we used to buy.
You mean like, how tall are they? Like 10 feet or 12 feet?
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five feet tall.
Okay.
It's, some of the ones we planted at North Lyle were four to, remember Dave, we went up, looked at them, we picked them, they were four to six inch caliber at that time already. We got a great deal because they were out there. They had to get rid of them because they were too big, but they're park grades, they worked out perfect for us. We got them all planted on North Lyle and those are doing pretty good, so.
Okay. Okay.
Revenues, that 558 in 2020 was, is that from Jennings?
Which one?
You know?
Tree replacement fees?
That mark, no, that was, you know, what's that development called? Was it?
Jennings.
That was Jenningsville's. Is there anything coming out of the Enchanted Island and/or the three lot, uh, at, uh, special one at, uh, off the Lotus Drive there?
Enchanted, I thought we were getting money for trees.
Pardon?
I thought Enchanted, we were getting money for trees.
We got, there's, there's a posting in there for $2,000 in 2020. Could it have been that small?
Could have been, because they had some significant trees that they were saving.
That seemed like a small number. That's why I was wondering.
Yep. That would, would have been enchanted if anything.
That sounds about right.
Yeah. Okay.
So the fund may even be a little bit bigger.
No, I, I mean, anything that would have been a development from this summer would be posted to that fund. So I, I don't think, yeah, yeah, so they're really, uh.
When, when does the developer pay for that?
When, would they pay when they pay all their other, basically right when they record the plat and they're going to go record the plat with the county and they want the money before they go do that.
So this money, all we can use it for is trees?
Environmental enhancements.
What are some other environmental enhancements that are trees?
Well, good, um, for instance, you could restore a wetland. That would be an environmental enhancement.
Would any of these trails on the park thing be listed? No, that's definitely.
Remove buckthorn, um, we've got those types of things. Good dead trees in part, you know, dead trees, planting new trees.
Yeah, you don't have to just plant trees. You could, if you wanted to do rain gardens, so let's just say you wanted to say, we want to encourage people to put rain gardens in their yard. And so you could do a program where if they did that, we would provide $1,000. You know what I'm saying? You could do different things like that. There's a lot of things you could do. If you wanted to put a rain garden for stormwater runoff into one of our parks, you could use it for that. You could put trees in the park. You could, yeah. So if you think of something, I don't think we have to decide on that tonight.
Well, I was going to say, because this is a fund, we've talked about this one and the parks one that, um, you know, we could talk about it in spring and amend the budget and it doesn't affect that we didn't levy any money for it because we don't, we levy tax money for this, so. So, yeah, we can continue this discussion at any time basically and just amend the 22 budget if we find something that we, hey, we're going to spend $100,000. I don't know what that is or whatever, but, you know, so.
Do we have a lot of the Emerald Ash trees still in?
Ash trees? We have a lot of that.
Where?
We have lots of ash. We have, uh, the whole Boulevard lining, Hunter's Trail is full of them. Um, the parks, City Hall, um, a lot of our parks have them in, so. We will be planting more trees this spring too, so we'll get that, uh, once everything gets done. We will be putting more, we should put some back at Jennings Cove, at Jennings Park.
Oh, right, okay.
There, that was always in the works. We just didn't include it with that till we're done with everything, so.
Yeah.
There will be some going in, back in there, so.
Okay. All right. So put that on your radar. We'll talk about it again in the spring. Okay. And I'll, and if you have that email, otherwise I'll forward it to, okay. All right.
Okay. I'll move, I'll move on to the recycling fund budget discussion and I'll hit the highlights of the memo and a couple documents here that start on page 25. So, um, the big driver here that, you know, we, uh, our contract in August of 2020, we entered into a new five-year contract with waste management and that was coming off of our previous five-year contract where we were locked in at a really good rate of $3.50, um, was what they charged us. Well, that bumped up last year already to, to 4.95 and it is going up a little each year. So, um, you know, I know we've had a couple different discussions on, uh, what, how to adjust the rate and how to phase that in, um, to, to basically be able to, uh, utilize some of the current existing fund balance we have on hand, but also know that, you know, um, you know, we're subsidizing, um, at a decent amount. Um, you know, when you look at the cost of the contract is, you know, $5.15 a month now and, you know, currently we're charging $11 a quarter. Well, obviously that's a, you know, about a $4 a quarter, um, that the city's spending down out of the fund balance. So if you look on page 26 there, I tried to, seeing the contract runs through the end of 2025, I tried to put together, uh, revenues versus expenditures. The top shows, you know, pretty much our main cost is our annual recycling, the curbside contract cost with waste management, number of accounts we have. And then at the bottom is using, uh, bumping the revenue up to $12, so basically a dollar a quarter next year and then trying to do, you know, a dollar, $1.50 the next, um, few years. And you can see we're still spending down fund balance, but we're at least mitigating that as far as, um, how we are going to look here in a couple, few years or whatever, as far as that. Um, we did build up a little bit of fund balance probably in the early 2000s. We, we used to be on a rebate program when the recycling market was good where our set rate was 3.50, but if the market bared a better rate, you know, we would actually only pay 2.50 or something. And we were charging our residents at the time 9.50s. For, for a little while, we were putting some money to the bottom line and basically now we're almost using it to help the rates, you know, stay lower, not go up as much. So, um, I ran a couple different options, you know, on page 26 is one option where it goes to $12, which I think would be fine for next year. Um, page 27 has an option two or maybe.
So what, what is it? No, I'm sorry.
It's $11 a quarter.
Currently?
Yep, yep. It was 9.50 for years and then finally last year we raised it based on our new recycling contract with waste management to $11 a quarter. And then I guess staff would recommend that we'd at least go to $12 a quarter for, starting for 2022 based on the, the analysis done, um, and projected budget for, for next year and beyond, knowing that our contract cost is pretty much, you know, locked in for the next through 20, August of 2025, so.
How come you have the Hennepin County grant going down?
It's because they, they're making a higher portion of it to organics versus curbside recycling. So it used, we used to get close to 20,000 or 1820 and it's gone to 15, 13. So they're, and we don't really know, you know, we're starting their new organics program next year, so we really don't know. And they gave us that $12,000. He said, oh, that was on the regular council meeting agenda. But that's going to be a one-time thing to help us, you know, get going the next couple of years on it. And then, but we have no idea how we're going to do it. And the, the grant they're going to base on is how much, you know, what's it called? Material, poundage or whatever, you know, that we collect, I, I know. So who knows what we'll get next year as far as how many people will really participate. So that's why it's plug in any, you know, revenue. It's just basically the proportion of the formula is shifting to organics because that's what the county's trying to, it's, it's an important priority to them, I guess, or, so.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're trying to encourage cities to participate in the organics because it's roughly a fourth of the waste stream and they're just trying to divert that from landfills, the burner, et cetera. So they're incentivizing cities to, by reducing their grant money and hopefully going to an organics program. And, you know, Brian and Dawn and I earlier this year spent some time talking with the folks from Hennepin County about that. And the one complaint I had, and I'm, um, they agree or not, I think they do, but, you know, Hennepin County kind of has a one-size-fits-all kind of approach to this. And, and one of the complaints I said is, you know, when you're looking at, you know, the city of New Hope or Crystal versus the city of Minatristo, the only thing we have in common is that we're both in Hennepin County. You know, we, we're nothing alike and yet we're supposed to all play by the same rules for the organics recycling. So if we were going to do a traditional organics recycling and contract with somebody to come to your curb and pick it up, it's, as previously stated, you know, you have another bucket. Now we have a recycling bucket, an organics bucket, a garbage bucket, so we got another bucket. And plus the cost to get it and pick it all up in, in a day or two days. What do we have, two separate areas here?
Mm-hmm.
For recycling, so they'd probably pick it up over a two-day period, but the cost would be just ridiculous because of the amount of driving. We're 32 square miles and, you know, and it's like, wow, I don't even know what that would cost. So that's why we ended up doing what we're doing, which is a drop site here. That satisfies the county's requirement. But like I said, I, our encouragement was if you could think about trying something different for some of the more rural cities like Minatristo, uh, Independence, whoever, whatever. So, I mean, cities that are out here, so. But that's not where they're at, so that's why you're seeing that decrease. We're trying to get you to do more organics even though it's going to be super difficult for that to take place out here. Maybe not on an individual basis, but a coordinated program basis might be pretty tough.
So they'll reduce it because we're not doing curbside recycle, uh, organics?
Basically. So you'd be paying for that or the residents would be paying for that. And then it might go up to, or stay at 11,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for $4,000, do you really want to do it?
Right.
Sort of made a decision. It's like, well, whatever. Let's just pump on that and just meet the minimums.
So we're into a three-year contract with organics, right, because of the grant money?
Well, we have to provide this for three years.
Yeah, the drop site, yeah.
So are we going to be able to monitor this to see if it's really worthwhile for us after that time to continue this? Are you saying we don't have a choice?
Both. I mean, you are going to monitor it. As Brian mentioned, they're, they're going to measure and, and take, keep track of what it is that gets dropped off here.
Well, staff time too. I mean, there's.
Yeah, but I mean, the bin is there, you know, I don't think we're going to have anybody stationed there to make sure they're not dropping tires there, but said dropping their organics. But, yeah, you know, there'll be some monitoring, but, you know, in order to get the grant, the carrot was, you need to have, do this for three years.
Right.
And then even so, I think.
We all know where to go from there.
Yeah, because I think their ordinance that they're saying we need to do organics under isn't going to go away.
No, it's not going to go away. This is not going to change. So, I mean, that was the, I wasn't trying to be smarty, but, uh, it's not going to go away. You're going to have to do organics.
But if it costs us, but if it costs us $1,200 or $1,500 a year, but because we do it, we get $11,000 a year, then it makes sense to do it, you know?
Right.
But if they say you won't get anything if you don't do it, it makes sense then to do it. You know, I mean, people, if they want to do organics, they just drop it off here if they want?
Or, you know, there is one vendor. That was the other suggestion we had is maybe make garbage vendors be in the organics business. It's kind of hard to do that, but there's one recycler or one, one vendor that provides a blueback service, Randy's or whatever they call them. But not all, all of them do, so. I don't know. It's a tough nut to crack, but we're kind of stuck.
So I think what Brian wants, are we okay with a $1 increase that would be per quarter, right?
Correct, yep, yes. So go from $11 to $12 a quarter. So basically you have four bucks for the whole year.
Is this included in that? I get a $37 bill when you do it.
Yeah, that's one of the, yeah.
Yep, it's one of the items.
It's recycling and yours would be recycling and surface water, stormwater.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. You're suggesting 12 bucks for 22, but.
But knowing that.
Future suggestions may.
Yeah, but each, each year.
Each year we're looking at.
Each year we look at it, right. I want to commit ourselves to this. He's just kind of giving this as an idea.
Correct, okay.
Right now we're committing to the $12.
Yeah, we're just looking at the 22 rates or fees for the rate schedule, uh, fee schedule.
It's less than, less than 50 cents a month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, less than 50 cents a month.
But we did a buck 50 a quarter already last year.
Right.
I wouldn't like to hit him with another buck 50 this year, although the numbers show that somewhere along the line, we're probably going to have to push them a little harder, but going to 12, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with 12.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Um, so then we'll move on to maintenance of the. So then we'll move on to maintenance of the Highland Road, we'll call it driveway.
That must be me.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, you had a request recently to, uh, have the city take over maintenance of the driveway off of Highland Road. Uh, this has come up periodically over the years. I've always taken the position that the city does not have any obligation to maintain that. And so, uh, I wasn't at the meeting in which this issue was raised. You asked for some response from me, so I put together a, a pretty short memo, uh, because I don't think it really required anything more than that. The position I've continued to, to take is that even though the city has an easement there, it has never utilized that easement. We've never put in any, any improvements there, never opened a road there. Whatever is there, uh, was constructed privately and has been maintained privately. And so, I don't think you have any obligation to maintain whatever is there. I laid out a couple of options for you. Really, I think the council has a great deal of discretion about what you wanna do, but in making a decision about what you wanna do, if anything, I want you to, um, not be under the impression that you have a maintenance obligation.
Thank you. So, um, the options that, um, Mr. Beatty put out, maintain the status quo or vacate the easement or open a public road. So, um, I'll use an example recently, not recently, a couple of years ago, we had some residents come to the city asking us to take over a private sewer line. So it was Lith, Litham?
Lithrom.
Yeah, Lithrom Way. For what's, whatever reason, this sewer line coming down their street, private street, by the way, um, coming down the street, connecting over to Hardscrabble, they, Hardscrabble, yep. Um, they said, you know, this really should be a public sewer, not a private sewer. And the city said, we don't have a problem with it, but there's a couple things. One, it has to be built to city standards and two, it has to be in good condition because otherwise we don't want it. So that's, that, those were the conditions that we said we would take it over. And I don't know where we're at within the process, but, um, so I think we can do any of these, one, two, or three. But if we do three, if we open it as a public road, the issues are plowing. The issue with plowing is you need a cul-de-sac so that the plow can turn around and come back. You need it to be, um, a road, it doesn't have to be paved, it could be gravel, but the road would have to be to current city standards. So most likely have to be a little bit wider, just for plowing and for, for, um, safety issues. Um, and again, it wouldn't have to be paved, it could be gravel, um, which then would bring up the question, is there enough right-of-way or easement to do, to even do that? And then the question would be, does the city pay for that? Do we wanna pay for it or do we say to the residents, we'll take it over once it's up to these standards?
Okay, question. Are these the Gales of Gale Woods?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they, they no longer live, I don't think they live there. I, I think they passed away.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, it was, um.
Are you the Gales?
No, no, no. Gale and Leona, they, they used to live there. They, I think they both passed away now.
Because who's asking for this?
The, how many residents are there?
There's four different families.
Four different, there's four residents and four more, I think there's more parcels, but there's four property owners.
Does the city owe the Gales anything from the past because the Gales gave land?
No.
There's no owing?
Wait, I wanna correct them.
We, we, we paid.
We didn't get land, they, we paid, yeah.
They own sixteen acres on, to the west of City Hall. We bought that from them.
Okay.
At, at value. They gave to Three Rivers Park District four hundred and ten acres, which is now the Gale Woods. They didn't give it to us, they gave it to Three Rivers Park District. So, no, we don't, they don't, we don't owe them anything or they don't owe us, or their estate doesn't.
Have you heard?
Hold on, let me see what other questions and, and we may have a few of you.
What was the original, do we know what was the original intent of the easement? Was a cert, was it to be a service to our residents so that they individually wouldn't have to negotiate getting to their property? Do we know?
I don't know, it was a nineteen seventy-six easement. Uh, I, I suspect it was to provide access to their property.
To really was a service to the residents at the time for us as a single entity to take that easement on?
Yeah, I don't know what prompted any of this because that predates even me out there, but.
The, the little bit I know of the history and talking to one of the owners who, um, has some knowledge is there was some land subdividing at, at that time. And I think to your point, the idea was this now then gives us all access, no matter what happens in the future, there's a, a public easement there that allows access for all those property owners in the future. So it was a benefit to the owners.
Sure. So for all this time, whether there's three neighbors, four neighbors, five neighbors in that two hundred and twenty feet strip, they have almost been like a homeowners association agreeing to keep the road maintained and sharing costs on however they define it. Is that?
Yes, I mean.
Kind of the general.
Right, and it's a long driveway.
Yeah.
The, the easement itself is sixty-six feet wide. You know, it, it's not atypical, I mean, the, the city sometimes gets, cities get easements in two ways. One is dedication on a plat or by separate instrument, which is what you, what is the case here. It's not all that uncommon for cities to not utilize the easement. It's always up to the city as to whether it wants to open the road. Um, and I've had a situation, I just had, had a situation in a city not too far from here where they vacated an easement, a right-of-way easement that was dedicated on a plat in eighteen eighty-nine. And for a hundred and, whatever that is, a hundred and thirty-two years, the city never found a reason to utilize that easement and finally decided to vacate it. So the fact that it's unused isn't all that uncommon.
There's another one in Minatristo that's like that. It's off a painter road, there's a right-of-way easement off a painter road. It's never been utilized.
The city doesn't own its roads, all the city does is get an easement over that, whether it's by dedication on a plat or through a separate instrument. And, and the rule on easements, of course, is that the underlying fee owners have the right to use the property in any way that's not inconsistent with the easement. And so all those folks who were served there are the underlying fee owners and the city has an easement which it simply hasn't used. And they, as a matter of, you know, self-help, acting as you say, like a, an HOA, have over the years apparently provided for a driveway and its maintenance and so forth. City has simply never seen a need for their, for the public to be involved in that.
So, if I understand, actually vacating it would just muddy the waters, would make it more complicated for the owners there?
I think it would, you know, I was trying to lay out options.
Correct.
That's not one that I would advocate and as I indicated in the memo, before you did that, um, you know, I would, if the city were interested in doing that, I think you'd wanna let the property owners know so that they could make arrangements among themselves so that they didn't end up with any landlocked parcels.
Right.
But then they would have to go to, they would have to record a new easement and agreement and all of that against all of their properties, which gets cumbersome and I, I wouldn't recommend that.
No, I agree.
Yeah. So I think your options are maintain the status quo or open it as a public road. And then the question would be, do the, in the sixty-six foot, if there is the sixty-six foot easement, that would be wide enough. It's just, is the road in a condition that's, would qualify as a city street?
Yeah, looking at it yesterday, it would take quite a bit of work in my unofficial opinion.
Right.
To widen it, uh, you've got wetlands on the north side in certain areas that drop off, so filling and expanding trees would come down, et cetera. I don't, for two hundred and twenty feet and then turning around at the far end where the private driveway, for that long one that winds all the way down to the lake, that would be a big chunk of land tore out of there as well, or an area that'd have to be developed. To me, based on the three logical options, maintaining the status quo seems to be the most logical. It has worked in the past, so we hope it would work in the future.
Yeah, I, since you're here, if you'll just come and state your name and address and then we might have a few questions for you.
This is for the Senator. My name is Bill, it's, uh, twenty-five twenty Island Road. Uh, I was here before you, six weeks ago.
Right.
Mayor and Council members. So, um, again, I had communicated with Mr. Beatty on this matter and he had indicated similar thinking for. And I, um, indicated to the council that, that my opinion was the city took an easement and they are the dominant easement holder and it burdens the lands, our lands included, my wife, Mary and I. And there's a benefit to having access, but the truth is that was, benefit was there before the city took the easement. But there's also a burden. Uh, the city can come in essentially any time they want and do road improvements.
Sure, we could.
And at this point, people, uh, we have to stay away from that sixty-six feet. And in fact, uh, the Sanquist, I think, had to be careful where they put a garage in that, just to take that into account. In with respect, um, he gave three options, but there's a fourth option and that is to maintain the easement. The city took an easement, the road purposes forever.
Well, we're not gonna get into a debate regarding that. I think, so the question is, which property is, we don't have the numbers on our, our map here, which one is yours?
We are the, um, westernmost property.
Okay, so you would be on the lake?
Yeah, on the lake.
Okay, the, uh, property that is west, um, sorry. Is the property that would be east of the end, is that the Gale property, do you know?
It is, but the easement stops two hundred and twenty feet short.
Right.
Of that. And that, that's the Gale property that I'm now owning by the woods.
Oh, okay, okay. And then, um, so you are the furthest western, so you.
Via Buck Highland Road.
Okay, on the south or north?
On both sides, on both sides of the easement, we have property.
Okay, and if it's on the lake, if I'm looking at this correctly, I don't see a house there, or am I not?
We just, we just put a small house on this summer.
Okay, okay. So how long have you lived there?
We, my wife, Mary and I, we have lived there for like a year and a half. We use it as a, as a summer place.
All right, um, all right. And so you own the two larger parcels on either side of Highland Road?
That's correct.
Right, and then Sanquists are next to you on the south?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, um, to the west of you on the lake is, who is that?
Reese Jones and Missy Graham.
Okay, all right, just wanting to make sure I know who everybody is and where it is, all right.
But by many, many respects, the three options, for example, one, vacate it. Uh, the city can't just vacate it, they enter into an agreement with the people who own the land. It's not an option to just, you know, I'll be vacating it, you have to have a discussion of landowners.
Well, I don't think there's any, um, desire to vacate it.
Well, I'm just saying that there's a, the fourth option is the one we presented last time I did report you and that's to maintain the road as it is. There's no requirement, we aren't asking you to expand it to, uh, the requirements with public road or take out trees or anything. Just simply maintain the surfaces as, as they are.
Well, Gary, maybe, um, we could have Public Works weigh in. If you have a road and, and does anybody know how wide this driveway is? Is it about twelve feet wide?
It's about sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet wide, yeah. So Gary, wouldn't it be hard to, to maintain this road? Um, I mean, because it's not a road, it's basically a driveway?
Yeah, the grader would have a tough time getting through there and trying to even turn around to maintain that. Same with our snow claw, we, we have a tandem ax truck that runs down there now.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, the front leg alone is twelve feet on that, so.
Yeah.
It would have a very difficult time and where to turn around would be the other factor down there. Where do you turn a truck around on there?
Yeah, right, right, okay. So, council, any questions? I'll be, property owners.
So the property owners have, you guys have no desire to make it a wider road that the city can actually use?
We're not expressing just, uh, no, like, we just want to maintain my deal.
Well, I think the issue comes in to whether or not we can maintain it as it is and we can't.
Well, John Sanquist has maintained it for a long time.
Well, I think the options are, what we're hearing is, see, our equipment isn't like private, private equipment. Um, John probably has a pickup truck and he goes and grades it or whatever, or plows it. And I know a pickup truck is substantially smaller than our plows and our graders, so it's, um, it would be a little difficult. And our minimum width for a road, and then we also have to look in terms of liability and standards. I think our minimum width is twenty-four feet, isn't it? So it would have to be widened minimum to twenty-four feet. Uh, and I'm not sure you, you would like that either, because.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I thought there's possibly some other equipment the city could have access to and some, yeah, that they could still maintain.
Well, council? I'm just, uh, hearing, and I did drive down there, uh, over the weekend and it is very narrow and even turning around, I had difficulty in the small vehicle. I, my cabin is on a private road, we maintain it. Um, I'd say we've maintained a status quo at this point.
I think based on if we're going to improve it and make it a city road, then it has to be expanded for it to work. And I don't hear that that's a preferred option and I don't endorse that being done for that two hundred and twenty feet. So I think maintaining based on the options we have is what I would agree with.
Okay. Anne?
Yeah. Okay, I hate to disappoint people, but at the same time, we don't have access to the other equipment. If we did, I, I'd fight for you, but we don't. So, um, I think we have to go with the status quo.
Constantly, it's a basic.
Well, we, there also comes a point in time, um, so you don't even live here in the winter. So basically, we would be plowing it for two individuals, you know, and to pay that kinda money and, and then to bring extra equipment in, you have to drive all the way down Highland Road just to get to this little section. I mean, we also have to be practical and we have to look at, um, how we spend our tax dollars and that just isn't practical.
I understand, Mayor, but my suggestion would be, uh, there'd be plowing equipment there, I assume, for Highland Road. And, and it's possible that the neighbors would go the plowing, and do the plowing still themselves, but ask for the road surfaces, hoppers and shoulders.
But you, because it's a gravel road and Gary, you can weigh in, I believe you have to grade it. Have you seen any of our graders?
The grader leg alone is, you know, fourteen feet, so, I mean, the narrower the road, the tougher it gets to.
Right.
You know, get in there and work and make crowding stuff, so it does get to be quite challenging on narrow roads.
Right. It's, it's, it's a ma, it's, I think as, um, Councilmember McGregor pointed out, it really is a matter of, of not having small equipment and we can't buy or rent or contract out small equipment for three property owners. I, I, it's not what you wanna hear, but, um, again, is, Kathleen?
I, I think we have to maintain the status quo, we don't have the equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is, um, a discussion on redemption health. Next is a discussion on redemption house issue. Mr. Beatty?
Me again, Metamare Council. As opposed to the very short memo that I drafted on the last item, this one is obviously a long memo. I thought it was important to draft a substantial memo because this involves a lot of unusual factors, unusual law. Typically, we don't have federal law that applies in the case of land use things. We're, we're used to dealing with state law and with local ordinances, but this is a rare case where there's federal law that also applies, and it doesn't come up that frequently. Several of you lived through this a couple of years ago, and so I think are probably basically familiar with it. For others, this may be new, so, you know, I apologize for the length of my memo, I hope people were able to plow through it, but I think it's important to understand the, the legal principles that underlie all of this. And to just give sort of a summary, there are two federal statutes, the Americans with Disabilities Act, which probably most people have heard of, which basically prohibits discrimination against people who have disabilities, as the act defines that, and the Fair Housing Act, which may be a little bit less well-known, but I think applies the ADA in the context of housing, and specifically, what it's intended to do is to ensure that people with disabilities, and that's defined in those two statutes, have equal access to housing as people without disabilities, and it applies to governmental entities as well as to private parties. And so, it comes to apply for local government when there are zoning or other local restrictions which are felt to impede people with disabilities from enjoying the same access to housing as, as the rest of us do. So what happens is that an individual with a disability, or someone who is an advocate for that individual or group of individuals, makes a request for what's called a reasonable accommodation. There has to be, first of all, you have to have a disability, which is defined in the statute, you have to make that request, there has to be a connection between the request and the disability, and then there has to be a determination as to whether that accommodation is reasonable. City doesn't have to adopt or approve all accommodations, it only has to approve accommodations that are considered reasonable. So, it, the statute comes up most frequently in exactly the context that it came up with here. There was a, there's typically a group home situation, often with people suffering from alcoholism. They exceed the number of unrelated people who are allowed to live together under local codes, and the request is for an accommodation, a waiver, an exception, that's what we're talking about, from that restriction in order to provide that access to housing. Once there is a request made, and there's a prima facie case made for the reasonableness of the accommodation, basically the connection between the disability and the accommodation, then the burden shifts to the city to prove that the request is not reasonable. And a request is not reasonable for one of two reasons: if it imposes an administrative or financial burden on the city, or if it substantially changes the zoning scheme. And so, if, if either of those comes into play, then the accommodation is deemed to be not reasonable and doesn't have to be granted. Otherwise, it pretty much has to be granted. This is an area that is the subject of a surprising amount of litigation. I'm aware of three cases right now in Minnesota dealing with this, and the courts are fairly sympathetic towards folks in this situation. So, it's something that cities need to be, be careful about. So that's the, the broad sort of underlying legal premise that is important to know. All of that is, you know, public information. The second half of the memo is the part that I thought should be subject to some attorney-client privilege, because I then try to apply those factors to a situation, a very real situation that we had here a number of years ago, which again, some of you were quite familiar with, having lived through that, and others may not be as familiar with. I, I offer some thoughts and, and recommendations in that memo, which is why I wanted to be careful about what I said with regard to it. But needless to say, it was a controversial matter a number of years ago, number of hearings, a lot of upset people, I think, on both sides of the matter. City finally worked out a compromise, or granted a reasonable accommodation for nine individuals to live in this property, less than the requested 13, but more than the three that are allowed to live under, under code. Subject to a number of conditions, I gave you a copy of the conditional use permit. That was the method that we chose at the time to process this. Since then, the city has adopted an ordinance amendment that, in a sense, grants a license for these things, so there wouldn't be a conditional use permit anymore, that's sort of a detail. But the conditional use permit was issued just over six years ago, October of 2015, subject to the conditions that are in that, that permit, and then the question was going to be, how did that play out? The final piece of information that I gave you in the packet is the police report on that property, going back, I think the earliest report on there was 2008. There were a couple of them that are from 2008, which obviously predate this use of the property. I think there was one in 2015 or 16, which was a couple of months before the issuance of the permit, but was probably the same folks, because they had been in there for a while before the city realized that, and granted, they went through the process of considering the reasonable accommodation. So that one probably is attributed to them. But, other than that, you see what I would say is a surprisingly short list of police contacts, and that's, that's the history. One of the conditions in the, in the CUP was an acknowledgement or a statement that the property owners were free to come back after a year and request the full 13 folks that they wanted to do, to live there. They have not done so, they've continued to live presumably with the nine, and it's come up recently because there was a complaint, given the fact that they were doing some work on their driveway. I think they had to park up in the cul-de-sac, and there was an observation that more than nine people got into the van, thus leading some questioning about whether they were complying with the maximum number of people living in that, that property. So, staff asked the property manager to comment about the number of people living there, and what he said was, we are, we have continued to comply with the stat, with the conditional use permit, number of nine folks, and followed up shortly thereafter with another email saying that they might want to move to another location, and might want to increase the number of folks at this place, but to my knowledge, the city has not received any further communication. So there is nothing on the table from the redemption house folks to change any of the status. So, I think the question really is, what, if anything, do you wish to do about this? And so, I'm, I'm going to stop talking now, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you have, and I want to give you the best advice that I can, but just remind you that anything that's said here will be public.
Thank you. You know, this was something that we dealt with before two of you were here, and I think as, as Mr. Beatty pointed out, it was contentious, I mean, the residents in the area were very opposed to it, and at the time, we felt we got good legal advice because of the federal laws pertaining to this, and so a CUP was, was issued. I'm not sure that there's a whole lot else that we can do at this time, because my, if I'm reading correctly, and what you've been saying, is whether they have nine or 13, it's still reasonable. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, just hear me out. So when you say if it changes the underlying zoning, the underlying zoning for this area is rural, rural agricultural, so 10 acres or more, and meaning that residential homes can be in this area, and if it was like, let's say, in a commercial zoning area, and they wanted to put a house here, or change a commercial building, and it was retail, for instance, and they now wanted to make a storefront a house, then that would change the zoning, right? So that would be something what you're talking about, if it changes the zoning?
Well, it, it's not really a matter of whether the zoning district per se has to be changed, it's a, what the statute says is that if it fundamentally changes the city's zoning scheme, in other words, would granting this accommodation, you know, and there can be any number of, the accommodation can be in any number of ways...
Okay.
...or aspects, would that be such a fundamental change to the way the zoning ordinance should operate? And I think you have, and that's, that's a rather ambiguous standard, and I think purposefully so, because it depends on circumstances, time and place. How large is the property? How isolated is the property? How many people are, is, do they want to live there? And I've had a number of situations in more urban environments in which eight or more folks, the request was for eight or more folks to live in houses that are 2,000 square feet or so, on urban lots, and, and that's, I think the, you have to look at the same factors, what do you do about parking, what do you do about all those other attributes, and at what point does that constitute a substantial change to the city's zoning scheme?
Okay.
In this case, we had a 15-acre parcel, a very large house, I think it was like 5,500 square feet, in a pretty isolated location. So, all of those factors go into determining whether allowing them to do whatever it is that they are asking would constitute a substantial change to the city's zoning scheme.
Okay, okay. John?
So you want, or the city needs, a consensus from the council as to what the next step is, right? And that is, either we recommend, I don't want to use the word aggressive, we recommend a step that says, well, the cup says that we can, based on scheduling it with the owner, the city can come and visit, no surprise visit, we have to schedule it, that was in the cup, or we decide based on attorney recommendations as to what the possible ramifications of that are, we say, no, we'll just leave it go. I mean, maybe that's not stating it succinctly, but is that what we're really looking for here? You want the co, the city wants the council to be able to respond to the complainant, because you need officially to get back to the complainant as to what the city's going to do about this, is that correct?
I think that's a good summary, you know, and, and do we let sleeping dogs lie, or do you want to do something about it?
So, let's walk through it then. Let's say we say, okay, we, we want to have it, we want to have city staff, not surprise visit, but go and take a look. What are they looking for? First question.
My gut feel, or my, because as you maybe don't know, or you do know, I'm a neighbor, and I was involved in 2015 when this hall hit the fan...
Right.
...more succinctly. It would be, has there been modifications made to the property to accommodate more people? They have, it's a five-bedroom house, that's how it was listed, I think that's what was there when there was a site visit done in 2015, prior to the company giving house from the city housing authority, or whoever was, the inspector went down, be sure they had proper egress address, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that was all cleared at that time. So has there been modifications made to the property to put in another bedroom? One of the things in the cup says, as I vaguely recall, is that there won't be modifications made. If we went, we, if there's a site visit done, and you can see there's been construction done inside, and now there's another bedroom, now to me, that infers that there has been more than nine. In a five-bedroom house, two bedrooms in a room, I mean, that's ten, house manager lives there 24/7, so that's one of the nine, so there could be eight students, or whatever they would be, you would assume the house manager has a bedroom to himself, 24/7. So you've got four bedrooms for eight, you two beds in a bedroom, that's eight. Now, if you go down there and there's another bedroom with two more beds in it, they're not for guests, would be my opinion, they are there for having more than the number of people. Statement for the record, because I'm close to the subject, it is not, one, it's a business, make no mistakes, it's a business.
Sure.
It's a moneymaker, not only here, around the country. Is their mission a good mission? Yes. I mean, obviously, the problems with drugs, and this is both drugs and alcoholics, these are people who have failed in a 12-step program, or they've stale, failed in some previous attempt, and this is another avenue, and it's, you know, God willing, it works, although statistically, any type of rehab in this avenue, 50% rehab, relapse is common, but their mission is good. It is not about the, the number of people coming here, and they're non-residents, they're from out of state, whatever, it's not about that, it is about the management of the organization, and how he's, he is running this, and his background, and I think, again, from, and this is personal somewhat to me, his flagrant flouting of the rules, how he came in, outright lied to the previous owners of the property as to how the property was going to be used, then when they bought it, did all they could do to stay away from us as neighbors, so we wouldn't know who they or what they were, and I can vouch for that because my... And I can vouch for that, because my wife was one of people that went down there with bars after we saw this car come in and go down there. At the time, we didn't know who it was, but it was John Leonard's car. Went down there right behind him to welcome him to the community, invite him. Car was in the garage, because there was no car sitting outside, nobody'd answer the door. Okay, so maybe he's in the bathroom. Then shortly thereafter, another neighbor went down, because we have a fall block party, we were going to invite him. This was during the summer of 15. We were going to invite him to the party. Saw the vehicle go down there, and again, the neighbor went down right behind him, nobody 'd answer the door. Again, it's obviously somewhat subjective, but two and two to me is still four. They were avoiding identifying who they were, because then they came to us in March of 16, and introduced themselves, and they were already in business. They already had brought in students, and they were running this operation.
So-
So then that's when it was raised to the city, hey, you know, what's going on here? This is a business, this is a residential area, no, the city didn't know anything about it. So they reached out and found out, hey, he's not, he doesn't fit the current code for our area. So then that's when it went through the planning commission, went in front of the council, they wanted 13. During the discussions, as they sat right there, both John Leonard and his lawyer, Mr. Fabian, specifically stated they knew they were in violation of city code, but they did it anyway. Why? Their inference was, well, that type of operation has prejudice against us, against them, and, you know, that's why they do the way they do it.
So basically, they came in under the radar, not telling anybody. But, so my, my question still is, you take the first step, which is, what you're saying is, you have to do an inspection. But then, what I'm trying to get at is, then, so let's just say, and I think Mr. Beatty was trying to say this, one, you'd have to prove that they actually have 13 people living there on a regular basis, not just, you know, a couple extra beds for out-of-town visitors, or whatever. So that you'd have to prove that, which would be difficult to do. But then, in, and the other thing is, even if we could prove that, let's just say you proved that, what, and I think kind of what I'm hearing Ron say is, is that still reasonable? And would the courts consider that reasonable? And if the courts decide that that's still reasonable, it's a five-bedroom house, 5,500 square feet, it's okay if 13 people live there, we don't have an issue with that, we, the city, would have to live with that regardless of whether they have a CUP for nine or 13, and we would have gone down this path of a lot of legal expense. So I guess I'm asking you and the council, is this a road we want to go down, knowing we probably, based on what Mr. Beatty is telling us, probably will lose? Because if the courts are looking at this, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but if the courts are looking at this type of situation, right now in the courts, and they're being very lenient towards the facilities like this-
Mm-hmm.
-what are our chances of getting them to agree to nine, and/or then holding to those nine in the future?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and Council, if I can make a couple of comments. You do have the right of, of an inspection, not a surprise inspection. So John's right, you'd have to arrange for, for counting, or, or a visit. I don't know what you would discover. One of the conditions is that there won't be physical improvements to the property without city knowledge. I don't, I haven't heard that there were any building permits issued, so presumably that hasn't happened. But, you know, I remember visiting the site six years ago. I think people did. And there were, you know, there were, there were 12 beds in there at that point, and there, there were a couple of beds in, in the basement. So, you know, you didn't need a, another bedroom to accommodate that number of people. Now, whether they pulled those out or not, I don't know. But I think the point the mayor is making is exactly the one that I was going on. Let's assume for a minute the worst, that there are in fact 13 people living there. Doesn't change the record. There has been virtually no city contact with them for six years. And so if in fact there are 13 people living there with no contact, that pretty much proves that 13 people has not been a problem either. And I think that strengthens their argument that if we open this back up, that if they say, okay, fine, we'll admit it, there are 13 here, and we want now to come back and get a reasonable accommodation for 13, I think they've got a pretty good argument.
And see, I don't want to open that can of worms, because you know what that does, you know? I mean, is that something you want to-
Before I say anything more, I'd like to hear the other council members. Thoughts?
I, I, I don't, I'm obvious, I don't live there. I wouldn't like it if that's, came into my neighborhood and they hit it and that, but that's water under the bridge. It's what, it happened, and it's approved, and they've been there, and there's, there's no, there's minimal complaints. I mean, they, I'm not their neighbor. From the police, lack of reports, it seems like they're fine, like they're not having parties, they're not, you know, breaking into homes, they're not doing anything, and I don't want to open a can of worms if we don't have to. I mean, they, how they came in was not appropriate, that sounds a bit, but again, it's water under the bridge.
Okay. Is there any harm to, is there, if you do the inspection, does it, open the can of worms and start the whole process? Or does it, or can you just do the inspection and come back and we start again?
Well, I don't know. That's up to us. And I guess that's what I'm asking is, do you, I mean-
John, do you want the inspection done?
Lo-
You want the inspection done, I'll go with you. You don't want the inspection done. I'm not, I mean, basically, yes, there, there are legal aspects to this that are unpleasant.
Yeah.
But you seem very adamant that you really believe that they're in violation of something. You're still angry over them moving in the way they did.
Mm-hmm.
And so, do you want to start the, to at least have the process done of the inspection?
I would still say yes. And the reason I'll say yes is I'll acknowledge I am the complainant. And my house, our house, sits right on the top of that cul-de-sac. So what I and my wife saw, and took pictures of, so it's not, even the pictures can be subjective, because it's not 12 people standing around the van, that they're coming up the driveway, one, then two, then one, then three, so it's snapping different pictures at different times. I know what we saw, I know the conditions that existed at that time, and that there was no cars down there, and there was no cars that drove in to drop people off, to get into the van, to leave. And when they got into the van, there was 12. And the house manager was the driver, so he counts, he's one of the 12.
And that was this past summer?
That was in August. And when they came back later that day, those same 12 got out and walked down the driveway. And it wasn't once, it was three weeks in a row, and it was 12 one time, it was 11, and it was 10. And that happens because they graduate people, they're a 90-day program. And we've seen people graduate during this time as well, in that the individual would walk up, and his parents, or some older adults would meet him, and actually, one came up carrying a mattress, which, why was that? But, so yes, I would still like, I, I am concerned about opening a can of worms, so that's why I'm hedging. But I believe if the gentleman wants to come and open, re-ask for an amendment, fine, that was offered to him, that was in there. Would, would he now maybe get his 13? Still got to go through the planning commission, is that correct?
Well, I'm not sure how we would do it, because as I mentioned earlier, we've amended the ordinance since then. We now have a process for a license. I guess I'd want to give some thought to that, but I think my recommendation would be that we would, as part of this, revoke the conditional use permit, because that runs with the land. And we would probably reissue a license to them in whatever, in whatever number. And, and that would be, that would be better, because the license would be specific to that operator and not run with the land. So that's a long way of answering. I think we would probably do it under the new ordinance. And that, I, as I recall, I don't think that involves the planning commission. I think that's a, that's a, that's a staff and council report. But, you know, as, as-
Does the council have to approve that?
Yes. Yes, but, but-
And is it a public hearing?
Yes. Well, it's a hearing, yes. So it, it doesn't change the potential for reigniting the situation.
That, that's what I-
And, and the only thing, I mean, you can make your decision about whether you wish to inspect. I guess the only thing I would say is, then you need to be prepared to live with whatever you find.
That's what I was trying to say too.
So if you discover there are more than nine people then-
And then what do you do?
And what are you going to do?
Are you willing to go, then are you willing to go to the mat and spend the time and money to make sure that they comply? Or give them 13? And if they already have 13, or 12, or whatever, why then just let it go? You know what I'm saying?
Well, that's what sticks in my craw.
I know, I know.
And, and I think if you live there, and, and I mean, you, you both lived it-
Yeah.
-through the council.
Right.
It is, if he wants to have 13, then come and ask for 13. Then it's in the rules, and it says right here on the page, it's 13. Instead, it's not only me, it's everybody in that neighborhood when the van goes down. They're trying to look through the windows to see how many people are in there, because of the tainting of the-
Right.
-track record he has.
Well, it's the way-
So if we call him on it, and he has nine, and then he says, okay, well, then I'm going to come back and ask for a license, or we go through the license, and we give him 13, hey, I suspect, and there's probably others who sit here who don't have to admit it, I suspect he's had 11, 12, 13 for a long time.
Probably.
So, alls we're doing here is making it official by calling him on it. I'm not asking him to get down on his knees and say, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, okay, we think you've been violating it. If you want 13, come back and go through the legal process. That's not costing us any extra money.
So then we don't need to do the inspection? Then we just need to send him a letter saying, hey, if you are operating with 12 or 13, please come back and ask for a license?
We've already done that. But he's, he says in his letter though, he's always been in compliance, which is a bunch of-
Okay, John, you have two choices. We either do the inspection, which opens it, or we send a letter and have him say once again that he has 13.
We've already, we've already sent the letter.
We sent the letter.
I mean, and basically, John's not satisfied with the answer.
Well, but I'm only one here. I'm only one. And I'm only the complainant in this case as well. If I hadn't been, not a council member, tomorrow morning, Mr. Veroni would have to be calling somebody and telling them what took place here tonight. Now, I don't have to do that, because I'm here, as I, so I saved him a step. So I'm not saying that I'm the lone decider here, it needs the five of us to-
John, I'm going to tell you where I'm coming from. Because I don't live there, so I understand this is really close to your chest. I, I really get that. But I will say this, I think we're wasting our time, because we can, we sent him a letter, he says that he's operating with the nine. You're right, may not be the truth, but if we do an inspection, it's not going to do any more, because then we're going to say, oh, you're not compliant, so now what? Then we have two choices. We say, come back and we'll give you a license for 13, or, or we take them to court and we lose. Those are our, that's how I see, those are our choices. And I don't think that, and then, even though it sticks in your craw, which I absolutely understand, and I get that, it, it kind of irritates me too, but I'm not willing to go down that road and open this whole thing up again and get all of your neighbors upset. I know they are right now, but I think they'd be even more upset if we came back and said, okay, here's a license for 13. I think they'd be more upset.
Well, and if you look at it realistically, like if he's approved for nine, and he's got 12 or 13, and he's approved for 13, is he going to go higher than more? Like, oh, well, I got away with four extra so far, should I do another four? I mean, that could spiral. I mean, there's a chance, I, again, I don't live there, I didn't see it, but maybe the overlap, giving them the benefit of the doubt, maybe the overlap was just for a couple weeks, this is 90-day program, so maybe, maybe now he's back to nine, and so then when you schedule the inspection, there'll only be nine. I mean, if, if there's a chance, there's an overlap. We can give him the benefit of the doubt of the date when he got the letter, there were only nine. Granted, it could have been two days earlier and he had 12, but when he got the letter, there were nine.
Right. Or like you said, there's an overlap, that, so they have extra beds for that week, or whatever, um-
Yeah, maybe some-
And are we gonna-
It's a can of worms.
That's where I'm coming from, I think-
I don't want to go down it.
For, for the record, I'll pull my complaint if that's a proper way of saying that, I'll rescind it or take it back. However, he knows the neighbors are watching.
Okay.
And we're still living there. And that's, I'm not saying there might not be a complaint in the future again, because if he wants to float it-
Yeah, yeah. And you have every right to, to lodge a complaint. So, all right. With that, we, I need a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you, Kathleen, Ann is our second.
Second.
And Ann made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We will be adjourned until our regular meeting at 7 o'clock.